Good evening. My name is Chaka Iovin. I'll be presiding over this evening's planning board meeting of October 8th, 2025. First administrative stuff, for those in attendance, under the provisions of the open meeting law, attendees are being informed that this meeting is being recorded by Urban Media Arts and will be live streamed on the Malden Access MATV YouTube site. I have not been notified that any other video or audio recording of this meeting will occur. The next thing we'll do is we will do a roll call of the board. We're starting with Maria.
Maria Schroder, Planning Board.
Ronnie Rajverma, Planning Board.
Todd Dejgabrisalasi, Planning Board.
Diane Chuha, Planning Board.
Chaka Iovin, Planning Board.
Pat Hayes, Planning Board.
Eric Henry, Planning Board.
Risa Gray, Planning Board.
Stephanie Stone, Planning Board.
Michelle Ferguson, Planning Board.
Thank you very much. The first item we're going to take up this evening is 210 Pleasant Street at 190 Pleasant Street. So if the petitioner is present, you can, first they're going to read the notice, but you can come up, make sure you sign the clipboard, and give your name and residential address for the record, please. But Diane, if you could read the...
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Council, I mean, Malden City Hall, 215 Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass, at 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 8th, 2025, on the petition of Tao Zhang for Acupuncture Herbs &amp; Beyond LLC on behalf of Malden Center LLC, permit application number CMID-073807-2025, seeking a special permit under Title 12 of the Code of the City of Malden, Section 12.12.030, to allow use of property in the Central Business Owning District for a licensed massage therapy salon, namely acupuncture and wellness services in approximately 946 square feet on the first ground floor of the existing building at the premises known as 210 Pleasant Street, located at the property known as and numbered 190 Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass., and known by city assessor's parcel ID number 0512755101.
Thank you very much, Diane. And just for notice, Maria Schroder will be voting on this case, and Michelle Ferguson will be voting on the 105, 105A Salem Street case. Thank you. Sir, you can come up if you'd like.
So, good evening, members of Planning Board. So my name is Tao Zhang. I'm the operation manager of Acupuncture Herbs &amp; Beyond. So thank you for the opportunity for me to represent. So we try to seek...
Excuse me, sir. Can you speak up or lift the microphone up and place it on the top of the...
Oh, okay.
...thing and talk into the microphone, please?
Yes. So we are seeking to open an acupuncture and wellness clinic at 210 Pleasant Street. So it's, it's like the light interior work. We try to partition, open space to file rooms, actually. So no exterior changes. So the previous tenant's yoga studio, so we have the similar use. So our founder, Wendy Lee, developed CBS acupuncture therapy. So basically, it's improve the circulation, balance, and stability. So she was a former faculty in biomedical engineering department in Windworth Institute of Technology and former research scientist at Harvard Medical School. So after he found acupuncture therapy can solve maybe 60 to 80% of regular disease, it really helped. So she just quit her faculty position and fully devote the clinic work. So right now, we have like 60, 70 patients for the, I mean, it's a local, modern residence. They travel to other cities to get the treatment. So I got some support letter, and also we collect some support letter around this area. So, so I already reached the counselor, Ram Amoli, in the power card, so we tried to introduce our plan. So for this clinic, we try to make it convenient for the, our existing patient, also provide opportunity for the special treatment, because not only acupuncture, it's a new acupuncture therapy Dr. Wendy Lee developed. So, so thank you for your time and consideration. I'm happy to answer questions.
Yes. Does acupuncture herbs and beyond exist someplace else right now, or are you opening...
Yes. So if this is going to be the ninth clinic in the greater Boston area. So we have clinic in Cambridge, Boston, Quincy, Natick, Needham, Walsum, Wopel, and Marlborough.
So you've got nine other locate, this is eight other locations?
Yeah, we have, we have eight. This is going to be the ninth.
And can you describe what the acupuncture therapy involves?
So basically acupuncture, so as I mentioned, Dr. Wendy Lee found the needle can see like circulation. So in the, in the stimulation of the needle, it can improve the circulation. So usually, the body thinks the needle is like enemy, so it push more blood to that area. So circulation and the balance, so a lot of times, because the body not balanced, left and the, and the right, if not balanced, our body just get confused. So adjust the balance and the stability. So we also use a herb to help. So all natural and organic things, we think is really special, but we also improve.
So, so it's a combination of the acupuncture and the herbal supplements associated to put everything in balance?
So I think Chinese herbal medicine has like 2,000 years history. So because there's thousands of natural herbs, we think it's much better than chemical drugs. So it's no sad effect, almost.
Okay. Bless you. Do you have to build out the location at all?
You mean for...
Is, is the location already set up, the way your plans indicate? So you don't have to build anything out?
So in the previous location, yeah, actually, we don't need to really build. This location is, it's a lot of changes. So we need, I mean, create the partition, and also we need to change the MEP, I mean, the electronic and the duct, we need to add the return duct, because we create the new, new space, new rooms.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. That five rooms, does that include the employee break room?
Uh, yes.
Okay, because on the plan, it only has four therapy rooms.
Right, right, right.
Okay. How long do you think the build-out will take? When would you anticipate opening if this is approved?
I think maybe, I mean, because we already got all the estimate from the contract, I think maybe one month, two months, it'd be finished. Because as a permit, we, we still need to get the permit.
And what would your hours of operation be?
So I think Monday to Saturday, Monday and 9 to 5, something like that. And Saturday, maybe the whole day, maybe the morning time.
Does this type of service generate a lot of medical waste?
Uh, no.
Or what do you do with the needles?
The needle, the needle, we have the recycle plastic box. I think every half year or several months, the, the, we have some company that picked up.
So you have a contract to come and pick it up and dispose of it properly? With regard to your trash removal, are you planning on using the city's services, or does the owner of the building have something?
All the G Malden Center there, we shared a trash, I mean, there's a trash rooms, yeah.
Okay, so it's a trash room?
Yeah.
How many employees do you expect to have onsite at any one time? Two?
Yeah, probably two, yeah.
And does, does the owner of the building provide you parking in their garage?
Yeah, we have two free parking space.
And you'd expect your customers to use the city garage or street parking?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I had. Does anyone else have any questions for the petitioner? No questions for the petitioner? Sir, you said you had something you wanted to turn into the board, some names, a petition? Did you say you had petition or something you wanted to turn into the board?
Right. So the petition, the support letter.
Yeah, you can bring that up. That's... Okay, thank you. Can we have this, or do you need this back? Thank you. If you want to pass it around?
I think we're going to have Diane read something into the record, just how many names or whatever.
Okay. I'll pass it over. Okay. If there are no other questions, does anyone have anything else for the petitioner? Sir, is there anything else you'd like to add to your presentation?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you need a brochure, I mean, I can, I can bring some brochure to introduce our...
Do you have any, what you write here?
Yeah, sure.
If, if you happen to have one, you can turn that in also.
Yeah, I, I do have some brochure, if you want to know the...
Okay, just one's fine for the record. We can put it in for the record after. Oh, thank you, sir. Okay. Well, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next part of the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
For anyone who would like to speak in favor of this petition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone that would like to speak in favor? Okay, with no one looking to speak in favor, Diane's going to make a comment about the petition that was turned in by the petitioner.
Yes, we have a petition signed by approximately 20 people from 8B Antonwood Road, 190 Pleasant Street, 190 Pleasant, 190 Pleasant, 190 Pleasant, 190 Pleasant, 160 Pearl Street, 177 Pleasant, 181 Pleasant, 37 Wenlock, 37 Wenlock, 39 Phillips, 141 Pearl, 141 Pleasant, 157 Pleasant, 190 Pleasant, 190 Pleasant, 50, 501 Casbrook, Casper, and 157 Pleasant Street. Then we have a letter of support from Lynn Phun of 24 Tremont Street in Malden. Another letter in support from Ja Peng Kwong from 113 Pearl Street in Malden. Another show of support from Dai Long from 360 Trail Street, Unit 5, in Malden. Another one from Yao Chen from 112 Linden Avenue. Another show of support from Jing Sun from 9 Folsom Court in Malden. And that would be it.
Okay, thank you very much, Diane. And last chance, anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing and hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone speak in opposition? Diane, do you have anything to read in opposition?
I do not.
Very good, thank you. If there's no one that wants to speak in opposition, and there's been nothing submitted to read, declare that part of the hearing closed. Michelle, there isn't anything in general that needs to be read in, is there?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if you would take us through your staff report, please, and recommendation?
So I'm reading from the planning report and recommendation dated October 8th, 2025, regarding 210 Pleasant Street at 190 Pleasant Street, this petition, I won't read it verbatim into the record, but it's incorporated here and by reference into the record. Given you some information about the subject property, this particular storefront, as you heard, is known as 210 Pleasant Street. It's in the building known as 190 Pleasant Street. And the building, this is actually a larger site with three, three buildings. I've given you the breakdown of the different buildings and the current occupancies, one of which is our city hall, where we are now. And heard about the petition. The premises are 946 square feet. They will be constructing four massage rooms and an employee break room. I've given you description of the plans that were submitted. You have a copy of the plans that were submitted. Also submitted was information that we have, or also that we're submitting to you, not, wasn't submitted by the petitioner, is information that was on file with the city. It's provided for reference, which is the site plan, the J Malden Center condominium confirmatory site plan that shows you the layout of the property. And also included was the marketing brochure, which gives you a breakdown of current tenants and current vacancies. In terms of zoning, the property is located in the Central Business Owning District. The proposed acupuncture wellness services is classified as licensed massage therapy salon use, which may be allowed by special permit in this district. By definition, licensed massage therapy salon is licensed by the state to provide massage services or acupuncture, and that's the definition in the city's zoning ordinance. And services that require a license to practice medicine, chiropractic, physical therapy, are classified as medical center use. They're expressly excluded from licensed massage therapy. So this is only licensed massage therapy salon, none of those other medical center uses. Existing business uses, restaurants, retail sales, recreation for gainful business, bank offices, general offices are allowed by right. The existing multifamily residential dwelling use was allowed by special permit rented by the city council. The Director Butter to the East on the other side of Abbott Street is a multifamily dwelling. To the south on the other side of Exchange Street, a municipal parking garage. Daycare Center and building with research and development and offices. To the west on the other side of Commercial Streets, the MBTA Malden Center Rapid Transit Station, commuter rail and regional bus hub. To the west on the other side of Florence Street, a restaurants, offices and a multifamily dwelling. To the north, two multifamily dwellings. Surrounding land uses of various businesses, public off-site parking facilities and multifamily residential dwellings. As currently used, the buildings on the subject property comply with all dimensional controls except the density requirement for the multifamily use. Avariance was granted by the Board of Appeal in October of 2015. The proposal does not increase the existing violation or create any new violation of dimensional controls. Terms of parking and loading requirements, the existing and proposed business uses of the property do not require parking, given that allowed non-residential uses in the Central Business Owning District do not have to conform with off-street parking requirements. For the multifamily residential use, 240 parking spaces are required per then-existing requirements. Loading's not required, provided that adequate on-street loading certified by the Traffic Commission. There are 325 parking spaces on-site. The required 240 for the residential use and an additional 85 for the public and businesses. They're located in the two-level garage under the 190 Pleasant Street building. No loadings provided. This proposal does not create any violations of parking and loading requirements. No traffic impact study was required per your rules and procedures. Findings that are required to grant the special permit, you would need to find, one, that any creation or increase in violations of dimensional controls or parking requirements will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Two, that the traffic and traffic patterns generated by the proposed use will not adversely impact any of the surrounding streets or create a traffic or safety hazard. Three, that the proposed use will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Four, that the proposed use is not in conflict with surrounding land uses. And five, that the proposed use is in the interest of the common good. So the recommendation, do you want me to move forward?
Yes, please.
The planning recommendation, which was made prior to the public hearing, provided that the board makes those required findings, is that a special permit be granted subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be as per plans, except as modified by these conditions. Minor modifications of the floor plan are allowed. And two, this special permit allows only acupuncture and/or wellness services at the premises 946 square feet, the storefront known as 210 Pleasant Street. Any expansion of this business and/or any other business classified as a licensed massage therapy salon shall require an amendment of this special permit.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? Stephanie Stone.
Thank you. Michelle, I just wanted to clarify, as far as our responsibility, when a tenant is making pretty significant changes to their space, if we need to confirm the owner of the building has agreed, or is that something that we sort of take as, when it's submitted to us, that that has already been worked out?
Yes, we do have record of the property owner's authorization to proceed with this petition. Petitioner submitted a copy of the lease, and it contains a provision that allows them to seek permits specifically for this premise and this use.
Okay.
Yeah, we, that's part of the permitting process. Before it even gets to you, we make sure of that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Very good. Anyone else have any questions for Michelle? If there are no questions, is there a motion? Diane Chuha.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant the special permit with the two conditions.
Okay, is there a second for Diane's motion to grant with the two conditions? Risa Gray.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. Give me a second to queue up the order. Okay, Michelle, whenever you're ready.
Okay, so this is the vote on the motion to grant the special permit with two conditions. Diane Chuha? Yes. To Todd Dejgabrisalasi?
Yes.
Risa Gray?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Maria Schroder?
Yes.
Yes. Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
Ronnie Rajverma?
Yes.
Chaka Iovin?
Yes. Petition's been granted with, with two conditions. Thank you very much. Yep, you're all set. Thank you. You all set, Michelle?
Yes. Diane was set up.
What's that?
Yeah.
Okay. Nope, good. Next item on the agenda is 105, 105A Salem Street. Diane, if you could read the notice, please.
Yes. The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, 215 Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass. at 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 8th, 2025, on the petition of Michael Whitmore, Roundell, 47 LLC for Volunteers of America of Massachusetts, Inc. on behalf of VOA... of America of Massachusetts, Inc., on behalf of VOA Salem Street LLC, permit application number CMID-073781-2025, seeking a special permit under Title 12 of the Code of the City of Malden, Section 12.12.030 and 12.12.300, to alter, structurally change, extend, and allow use of pre-existing non-conforming property in the residential office zoning district for multifamily dwelling up to three stories and an inclusionary development, namely, to construct in addition to the existing building and to renovate and use the property for 12 affordable housing units for veterans, with an accessory office for resident support staff at the property known as and numbered 105-105A Salem Street, Malden, Mass., and by city's assessors, parcel ID number 087264407.
Thank you very much, Diane. And just for public notice, Michelle Ferguson will be voting on this case. If the petitioner is present, you can come up to the podium. Anyone who's speaking, please sign the clipboard and introduce yourself and your residential address, please.
Good evening, Chair Iovin and members of the board. Thank you so much for having us tonight. Good evening, Ms. Romero. Good evening. My name is Matt Lane. I'm the Vice President of Real Estate for Volunteers of America, Massachusetts. Behind me is Michael Whitmore, the project architect, and Volunteers of America's CEO and President, Charles Ganyu. We're here before you, asking for a special permit granted for the building at 105, 105A Salem Street, to renovate and produce 12 units of affordable housing for veterans. Mr. Ganyu's going to talk a little bit about who Volunteers of America is, what we do, our work with veterans, our experience in running this type of program, and why we chose Malden. And then we can answer any questions, and Mr. Whitmore also can answer technical questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Matt. Good evening, board members. My name's Charles Ganyu. I'm the President and CEO of Volunteers of America. We go by VOA Mass. Thought it might be helpful just to have you kind of understand a little bit about what we do, how we do it, and why we're here tonight. So Volunteers of America, Massachusetts, we're a community-based nonprofit. We've been providing services in the state of Massachusetts for 91 years. You may think Volunteers of America, I've heard of that before. We're part of the national organization. There's 30 affiliates across the country that help people each and every day. That could be veterans, it could be someone who's facing housing eviction, food instability. We're an organization that started in 1896 in Lower Manhattan. And you know why we were doing there? We were helping people that had needs. Overcrowded tenements, people coming through Ellis Island, et cetera. 130 years this March, we're an organization that has 30 affiliates across the country. We're one of the largest human service organizations in the country. We have over 16,000 employees, and no one knows who we are. It's just a marketing debacle. They think, well, volunteers, do you pay your employees, et cetera? Back in the day, we used to work, community minister would lead volunteers to help people that needed help. And that's how the term volunteers started. And we're here today after 90 years-plus service in Massachusetts, and we do a variety of things. So one thing Volunteers of America is across the country, we're the number-one community-based partner with the VA. We're known, and we do more veteran services across the country than any other nonprofit. We also provide a variety of other services. We're actually quite diverse. We operate a variety of behavioral health out clinics. We run residential programs that would be more similar to in treatment, folks that are in recovery, for mental health. We also work with workforce development. A lot of the folks we serve want to move up the economic ladder, so we do skills training, job placement, job readiness, and job coaching. We also do a lot of work in the reentry space with county corrections, making sure folks that have served come into community across the Commonwealth and make sure that they're supported with a structured program. And the last thing we do is older person care, and I think you may know this. We're the owner, developer, and operator of Forest Hill Park. So we've worked with the city for many years. You know, we spent over $32 million. We could not have done that without full partnership with the city. It was outstanding. We use federal tax, historic tax credits, et cetera. I don't know if you've been to Forest Hill Park lately, but it looks like a four-star hotel. Eighty-four percent of the residents are from Malden. We have 22 units of memory care unit, and we're very proud of that work. And I think, and I want to demonstrate that, we have the capacity to do large, complicated projects, and we also have the capacity to deliver high-quality services. So what I just wanted to really remind folks today, when I spoke with the mayor and other stakeholders, there's no set aside for veterans housing in the city of Malden. Malden has a big heart. I know you have a lot of empathy and support for veterans. And when we talk to people, we really want to understand what we could do to provide that gap for veterans. And every time we provide housing, our model includes services. We adopt a whole-person care model, which means every veteran or anyone we serve gets a full healthcare assessment review. We look at housing to make sure they have suitable housing. And how do you support housing in eastern Massachusetts? You need employment. You need to work to make sure you preserve that housing. So I just here to say, we are committed to really making a significant investment in 105 Salem Street. We met with the neighbors last week. We had a lot of good feedback, positive feedback, and we're here to the planning board to ask for your consideration for a special permit. Thank you. Matt? Thank you.
And Chairman, I think you asked for our addresses. I'm sorry, I live at 28 Geraldine Drive in Norwood, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
And our project architect is Michael Whitmore.
Good evening. If it pleases the board, I can share from our laptop the same images that you have and work you through the plans. Is it best to use the Wi-Fi access or the USB?
You'll be able to use the shared in a minute. I'm just going to get the screen.
Okay.
Is it blinking? Is the tab blinking?
I just downloaded the ClickShare extension pack
Oh, okay.
in hopes that that'll get us going here.
Is there anything we can be helpful with in the interim if we're waiting, or?
You want to just wait?
Yeah, we'll just wait for that.
Thank you.
Just a reminder that for those that are speaking, give your name and residential address for the record, please.
Yeah, exactly. And we're getting the consistent error. It's not flying. I just downloaded the extension pack, but... No, that's a USB converter. Here, we'll try this and see if we can load the extension pack and restart real quick. We'll do a quick restart and see if we get the extension pack working. If not, walk you through the plans.
No, I need the, no, I need an HDMI extension. We have an HDMI there, but he doesn't have the extension, so he's using the one to share, so he had to download the app for the one to share.
Thank you.
Apologies, it doesn't seem to like my Mac. So what I'll do is, I'll walk, my name is Michael Whitmore, 46 Allen Place, Situate, with Roundell 47. And I will walk you through the plans in the order that the package you have in front of you hopefully is organized. So the first page you'll see in the package after the cover sheet is for existing conditions. This is numbered SI01, and this plan shows the current condition of the lot. We are at the corner of Salem and Albion. We have a roughly 2,000-square-foot existing building footprint on a close to 10,000-square-foot lot. The lot's actually 9,996 square feet, give or take a foot. Most of the lot is paved. There are small lawn areas indicated, fronting on Salem Street and Albion. The parking arrangement consists of 16 parking spots, none of which are really compliant with current zoning requirements in terms of parking stall sizes. And we also note in our existing condition zoning analysis that we're somewhat nonconforming for the existing condition of offices and a one-family unit that is located on the first floor of the building, a one-family, two-bedroom unit. The rest of the building is used for business offices, primarily attorneys up until the building was vacated. Moving on to the next page, which would be SIO2, this shows the proposed condition. And what's important about this, a couple things. Number one is that our parking requirement for the proposed 12 studio units that are located within the building sets up a parking requirement for 12 parking stalls. We meet that requirement with the proposed plan, and importantly, the parking stall configuration also satisfies all of the zoning requirements. And that would include stall size, backup aisles, sufficient space in order to back up without crossing the sidewalk, and other areas where the existing condition is deficient. We also provide an accessible, van-accessible spot with its associated access aisle. Also, you'll see on the plan, another important component of reorganizing parking and paving on the property is we have been able to create substantial additional green space on the property, essentially in the corners. At the corner of the Albion Street entrance to the parking, back corner of the lot to the southwest, and then finally up towards Salem Street, near the access aisle of the accessible parking spot. This all serves to not only bring the parking into compliance for the proposed use, but also to provide additional green space on the property, reduce heat island effect, and other important sort of urban design considerations. And then equally provides an opportunity for better management of surface runoff on the site. Currently, every drop of rain that falls on the property runs off the access driveway aisles across the sidewalk and into the street. The proposed design by DGT, the civil engineers and surveyors on the project, will create sort of mini rain gardens, if you will, collecting surface runoff from the parking area in these small green spaces. They also are useful for snow removal storage as well.
Excuse me, I just want to clarify for the board. You should be looking at the updated S102 plan, which is a separate handout. It's not in the, the original plan was modified based on the city peer review recommendations. So make sure you're looking at this one, which is hard to read the date, but it's green, it's got the green coloring. It's dated revised through September 10th, '25. So that's the site plan. And then when they get to it, there's also revisions to two other pages. So just want to make sure everyone's looking at the right plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. In the course of working
In the course of working with the planning department and the city's third-party reviewing traffic engineer, we requested a waiver from a traffic impact report or study that was granted by the board upon the BCS's recommendation with a few conditions. And what, partly what's Michelle addressed, the revised site plan indicates revisions that were made with BCS's input and review of the site and our engineers incorporating those requirements. Further to that end, while we're reviewing zoning on the property, and you'll hear this in Michelle's report as well, is that there are a number of areas of nonconformance that are proposed as part of our 12 units of housing. Most of these relate to density. And this is somewhat skewed by the fact that the proposed occupancy is as 12 studio or 12 bedrooms, effectively. However, density requirements in the zoning code are based on units primarily. And what that does is creates a situation. All right, so we want to discover the display. There you go. Yeah, which one of them?
I don't know which one it is.
No, try that one. Let's try the other one. Do you have any airplane code for that?
Nope, there's no code. Should've just picked the right up. Got something happening now.
Yeah, there we go. You got it. Quest time. Oh, no luck.
All right.
Thank you.
That's right.
Thanks for your help.
Yeah. All right, so back to zoning. The primary issue with zoning nonconformance that's proposed with the 12 studio units is related to the fact that they are studio units. So that does elevate the account of units, which in turn impacts things like open space requirements, the area that's devoted to the overall lot area that will support the number of units and so on. So one way to look at this is if you take those 12 studio units and there are 12 bedrooms, compare it to, say, a more typical two-bedroom apartment, same number of bedrooms, you would only have six units, which would bring us closer to compliance with both open space as well as overall lot size for the given number of units. So in this situation, it's somewhat skewed by the unique proposal that you have before you for 12 studio-type units, which are appropriate for the veterans' housing that's proposed here. Moving on to, as Michelle indicated, there are additional plans that were provided by DGT, which are C1 as revised.
So if you just make sure you're looking at, for C1, it's the third set of plans you should have. And that's the one that's revised through 10/1/25, the proposed parking layout plan. It's not this. So it's not what's in the thick package and it's not what's in the package we were just looking at, the two-page package. It's in, or the three-page package. It's in a third, two-sheet package at the end. Again, it's dated 10/1/25. That's the most current proposed parking layout plan.
This plan is the product of our collaboration with the BCS reports and reflects a couple of concerns that were raised and how they were addressed. Number one, we altered the parking layout in order to avoid the first parking space requiring someone to back up and potentially cross the sidewalk at Albion Street. So we relocated the parking spaces more closely to the western corner and created sufficient backup space. Another comment that we had from BCS as a condition for the waiver of the traffic impact study was to review traffic sightline considerations on Salem Street, which is where the one-way pathway through the parking lot exits. The outcome of that was to show that we do comply with sightline recommendations, given the dimensions of Salem Street and the speed limit on that street as well. Part of the request was is that we maintain clear sightlines by restricting planting within that sightline triangle. And you'll see that on the plan indicated at the Salem Street exit. And that will be observed, limiting any vegetation that's in the green space to two feet or lower. Another consideration that was put forward was to collaborate with the city on putting in a no-parking sign to the east of the Salem Street exit from the parking area. The goal being there to eliminate a parked car, which should not be parked there anyway because of proximity to the crosswalk, to eliminate the prospect of a parked car potentially limiting the sightline to the east, looking up Salem Street. So that's indicated on the plan as well. And we look forward to working with the city's traffic department on carrying that out. The page that which most likely follows that in your package shows photographs of Salem Street and then an overall satellite view exploring the sightlines, both east and west on Salem Street, and showing compliance with recommended guidelines. And BCS has provided a report to the planning board with their final comments on both the site plan, general traffic, and parking layout. And I think what's left on our list will be to follow up on the no-parking sign with the city. Your packet will show you existing floor plans. And as indicated, originally, the building was constructed as a residence. And then over time, began to be used as a office of late attorney's offices. And as we noted, on the first floor, there was a two-bedroom apartment located on that first floor level. Elevations of existing conditions follow. There is an access ramp that was constructed at some time in the past to primary entrance on the side of the building. Unfortunately, that's in rather decrepit condition. So part of our scope of work will be to repair that, essentially in the same footprint, but all-new construction. The building was added on to the rear over time. And that's shown in the western elevation primarily, as well as the Albion Street east elevation. And then to move forward to drawing A 100, this is the proposed floor plans for the building. And I won't spend a whole bunch of time on these. The building layout is fairly straightforward in that we are proposing four units, studios, as we've mentioned. Each unit has its own kitchen, bathroom, and then a studio space for both sleeping and living area. In addition to the 12 studio units, on the basement level, we'll be providing a program office that will be used by VOA staff in providing support to the residents. In addition to that, we have a meeting room that can be used by residents as well as VOA staff. And then a larger communal kitchen and dining area. Because the individual kitchens are fairly small, one of the goals of the project is to provide these communal spaces where residents can come together. And also, if they have visitors, be able to have access to a full kitchen layout as well as dining space. And this will be used in common.
Excuse me, sir, are you anticipating providing lunch and dinner or breakfast, lunch and dinner to the tenants daily? Or is that just if they're having an outside event at the location, like a community room?
I'll let Matt take that. Thank you, Chairman. These, the individuals that would live here would be providing their own meals with the opportunity to cook into the kitchen if it were something, if they were baking something or something that couldn't be prepared on a kitchenette that would be in the studio unit. So they, you know, these would operate just like a regular apartment building would, where you live there, you're responsible for your own food. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't have, you know, maybe a shared meal every once in a while around the holidays, that sort of thing. But predominantly, individuals are responsible for their own meals.
Okay, thank you.
And in addition to that, at the basement level, and this is an important note, we're proposing to provide barrier-free access to the ground floor, lower level, because we have common functions there that folks would need to have access to. And then internally, we have a vertical platform lift, which will also provide access to the main entrance level of the building and an accessible design residential unit located on the first floor as well. As noted, on each level, we have four units proposed. And these all have their own kitchen, bathroom, and living/sleeping space facilities. Moving up to the second and third floor, which is drawing A-101 in your packet, you'll see that we have four more units on each of these levels. There's also a shaded area on the second floor, which is an existing porch, which we are proposing to infill and obtain some additional square footage for the studio in the back corner. And then, more importantly, on the third level, to the south, where we currently have a two-story above-grade structure with a flat roof, we're proposing to extend out the gable roof and provide additional occupiable floor space on that third level in the rear of the building from Salem. And that will provide two additional units. That gets us up to 12 units, all told. Important things to note about the overall proposed construction is that, given the scope of renovations, the building will effectively meet new construction code requirements, new construction energy code requirements. We anticipate doing, at a minimum, we will be replacing the rear stair because it's too narrow. So that will be new construction within the building. And of course, the units themselves will be new construction. We are working to preserve the front stair, which is rather nice with a sort of elliptical shape to it, as well as existing window openings. So that you'll see when we get to the proposed elevations, which are drawings A 400 and A 401 in your packet, that for the most part, existing window openings that are currently in the building will be preserved. So we designed around that layout in making bathrooms, sleeping space, living space work around that for the individual units. The second floor to third floor expansion in the back is handled with a wood shingle type appearance just to differentiate it from the rest of the principal structure and help bring the scale of that elevation down a little bit. And then finally, we would be locating electric heat pump equipment as well as energy recovery ventilation up on the roof. So we get that up off the ground level around the building and locate it up on the roof where it's more protected from parking, for one thing. So that's a brief summary. And thank you again for plowing through your drawings on it.
Thank you, sir. Question for you. How long do you think the renovations, pretty extensive renovations, both to the exterior and interior, how long do you think the renovations would take?
Right now, we're expecting it to take 18 months. Once we cross this threshold, we'll begin construction documents and then working with construction managers to put together final construction documents, apply for the building permit, and obtain other permits as required, and then begin construction.
So you'd be looking for occupancy in mid-2027?
Correct.
It'd be great if we could do it quicker than that, depending on how well things are going. But I think conservatively, we're saying 18 months.
Would you, do you anticipate the exterior renovations would require any type of staging, construction staging?
Yes, potentially, because we intend, the building's currently improved with metal siding. We propose, as part of the scope of work, we're going to strip that off to the original wood clavard, determine what the condition is of that, whether it can be retained or not. Our expectation is not, based on what we've been able to peek at. So we would be removing exterior siding to the sheathing, which will then allow us to provide exterior insulation sheathing to meet energy code requirements, provide better performance, and then new siding over the top of that. So it's likely on the street sides that we would use staging in order to control debris removal and facilitate construction as well.
But it wouldn't be for the full 18 months? It would be for a shorter time, I would imagine?
Correct. I think most of the work would tend to be off of boom lifts back on the west and south side, where we have access from the parking lot. But because of the tight constraints against the public sidewalk But because of the tight constraints against the public sidewalk on both Albion and Salem, there we would want to take a more cautious approach and use staging.
Right. I'm thinking of the high school and when they're in session and what impediments might be presented to the kids trying to get to school. Can you speak, or can someone speak to the affordable housing component of this project?
Sure. So as part of the inclusionary zoning, you know, we had said that of the 12 units, 10 would be affordable. The affordability matrix would vary. For example, the, we run a similar program in Somerville. It's part of the Mass Bay Veterans Center at 2 North Street in Somerville. And so, that's a veteran's shelter. And the top floor of that building are seven independent living supportive housing units for veterans. And they range with veterans, they're subsidized units, and we envision these units to be subsidized as well. And those units range from people living with 30% or under of the area median income all the way up to 80%. And so, that, you know, somewhere that mix will be 30 to 80, if that answers your question.
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see on the plan there is a dumpster. Is that, do you plan on contracting with a service to empty it? And how often? Would you see that weekly? I imagine at a minimum, weekly?
Sure. So if it works out to use city trash services, we would certainly do that. The new green space that's been created, you see on your plan, there's room for a dumpster. I suspect it would be weekly. That's, you know, it's something that we do in Somerville. Those veterans that live on the top floor of that building, there's a dumpster for them, it comes weekly. But, you know, we have good relationships with all of our vendors, and so that if it needed to be more or ease back a little bit, they're generally pretty flexible.
How many staff? Can you talk a little bit more about the actual services you'll be providing? And what type of staff you'd have? And when they'd be on location?
Sure. Yeah, that's a good question. So one of the things I didn't cover specifically, we operate several different veteran programs across the metro area, including up to Essex County, down to the Cape. So one of our most prominent services called Supported Services or Veterans Family. It's something that focuses on families in housing distress, prevents homelessness, and providing really a permanent housing plan, and also making sure that the housing is sustainable. So that certainly will be a source of referral. And we actually have 18 full-time staff throughout eastern Massachusetts. 75% of those are veterans, so it's really important for the services to have this peer-to-peer trust between veterans and other vets that might be, you know, experiencing housing instability, et cetera. So that's one thing. We also have, part of our whole person care, I mentioned earlier, that we basically have created a mobile clinic and support service team without walls. And what that includes is housing specialists to make sure folks are, you know, paying their rent before they're paying the cable, making sure they're doing really good decisions. Those include employment specialists, that we want folks to secure a living wage plus benefits. We also have recovery coaches and community care navigators that are all part of our veterans team, that making sure that veterans are signed up and approved for the right kind of insurance, is outside the VA. So there's a whole myriad of services that provide healthcare supports for healthcare stability, housing placement, housing supports for housing stability, and lastly, employment stability. And those are becoming intermittently during the week. For instance, our clinicians see a variety of the veterans, if not in person. We can meet them at their house, but we also do telehealth. We can frankly meet them anywhere. It's part of our customer service model. Meet them in a park, we can meet them in their apartment, they can come and meet us in our outpatient clinic, or we can do it over telehealth. So services will be prominent, and each veteran will have a specific individual service plan.
But it isn't going to be like a set staff there at the location each day?
Well, we definitely will have staff there each day, but we're not going to have a full-time property manager, if you will, to be a resident manager. So we'll have staff there throughout the day, and they'll just vary over time. And the 12 units, it's really about supporting the vets to live independently, and based on what their needs may be, we make sure that the plan is accordingly.
And how many people would that be, that would be there every day, or Monday through Friday?
It could be anywhere from one to three people. We had talked about the community room, so a lot of times, we do things like, we do basic budgeting, and we could do first-time homebuyer classes. We could bring in, do some skills training, where maybe some of the vets are interested in property management. So it depends on a variety of topics. And that's what we do at Somerville. We have a meeting room, and we do a lot of things. And also, the VA wants to swing by, so we have a lot of partners that come in to support that, including city partners. At the neighborhood meeting, we had, I think, over 25 people. Four or five people want to volunteer. So really trying to coordinate to make sure we're respectful of independent living, but the supports are there to make sure that our vets thrive in downtown, you know, Malden, and that they're part of the integrated care for the community. And we want them to thrive here, and that's the reason why we're proposing this.
Okay. Do you anticipate any type of parking problems, bringing these outside services in? Because what I'm thinking of is, when school's in session, between teachers and students, that area gets kind of congested.
Sure.
And you're only providing 12 spots off-site, onsite, so?
12 and one for staff, 13 total. Okay. Yes. I think, based on experience and the program that we currently run in Somerville, that's seven units of supportive housing. I think at the moment, two of those individuals drive. Generally, the people that would live in a building like we're proposing have reached a level of self-sufficiency that they've, they may have experienced homelessness in the past, but they're really just looking for a stable place to live, subsidized unit. But the reason we really wanted to be in Malden and wanted to be on Salem Street for this particular property is, it checks a lot of boxes for us. It's close to public transportation, there's a bus line right on Salem Street, it's very walkable, there's amenities close by. So if we had 12 veterans, if the building was full, I would suspect that it would, less than half would actually have cars, based on experience of running similar programs. And so, you know, staff, as Charles mentioned, you know, there would be one staff there generally every day, but their discipline could vary, their specialty could vary, so it wouldn't be the same person every day. So we feel like the parking would be sufficient for what we're trying to do.
And I would just add, Mr. Chair, that sometimes I'd say a clinician comes and sees two of the vets. They might be there for 90 minutes and they're gone, you know, making sure that there's an ebb and flow. Once again, we want our vets to be engaged in the community, and if they need services onsite, we could provide that. Some, it'll be on a sliding scale. Some of the veterans will use very little services, which would be, which would be great. So it's a matter of having a balance inside the building. And typically, we have less than 25% of our veterans have cars, you know. And also, part of this design is, a lot of folks, the veterans have come from a certain level of housing experience. We see 12 studios of studios that'd be permanent housing, but some folks may come and spend a couple of years and move on to private housing, public homeownership. Some vets may say, I love this place, this is for me, and they could stay as long as they want. So it's really trying to create a housing ladder for our veterans to go from being in a program, getting stable, you know, they've ended their service, they're civilians now, and a lot of our vets, it takes a while to adjust that. And then moving up incrementally, a housing ladder to get to the point where they want to be, and moving them up an economic ladder around employment, and making sure that they have the skills to compete and certainly sustain their housing. So that's part of the thinking about 12 studio apartments. And we will not have families there. 96% of our vets are males, 4% are women. We have four full-time female vets, so it probably most likely to be 90 or a total male, or there might be one or two units for females.
Now, thank you, I appreciate that, because my next question was going to be, do you have an average, with some of your other properties, what's the average duration of someone being a tenant?
Sure.
Well, Matt referenced that the Mass Bay Veterans Center on North Street in Somerville. Most of the tenants have been there longer than three years. It's, they love being part of the community. They may have been down on the first two floors and have this whole sense of like they have a family. A lot of our vets sometimes come back and they burn their bridges with families and friends, so they're starting over. So it's part of creating a culture of engagement, support, and trust, and non-judgment. And that's the reason why the vet-to-vet thing, I'm not a veteran, but I see it happen with our staff and the folks we serve. It's pretty magical, and it takes a while, it takes kind of slow, but at the end of the day, we've had a lot of success. The other thing that we all can do for Supported Services Veterans Family, we can access down payment assistance for veterans. We can offer closing cost assistance. So there's a lot of resources in veterans' community, most of vets don't know about it, to provide them movement throughout the housing opportunity ladder. And, you know, it's funny, we had an older vet at the Mass Bay Veterans Center in Melvin. Served 20 years in the Marine Service, never owned a home, 68 years old. We worked with the VA, he's originally from Georgia. He just bought his first-time home with a VA loan and technical assistance from us, and he can be happier. He's been in a wheelchair for 15 years, he's got his own home.
Oh, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for the petitioners? Stephanie Stone.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm curious if you, so this building is fully only renting, would you ever consider, or do you have other programs where it's an ownership opportunity?
Specifically, we haven't operated a homeownership program for veterans, but we partner with community development corporations and other housing organizations that do first-time homebuyer classes. So for instance, at our Plymouth area Veterans Center, right in downtown Plymouth, we've made referrals for veterans that participate in the planning department's first-time homeownership class. And we would like to do more of that. So right now, we've been focused on this continuum of care for veterans. That really includes permanent supportive housing. But I don't think it'd be long before, you know, us really offering, and certainly when there's preferred financing for veterans, to be able to buy a home, because a lot of vets, that is their dream. And we need to figure out a way with both the Executive Office of Veterans Services, which is the state, and the VA. And just for your own edification, Secretary John Santiago, unfortunately, he's just resigned. He's a physician at, you know, Boston Medical. He's been an amazing veteran, first veteran as secretary. He identified North Metro, including Malden, Metford, and Everett, as being a desert of opportunity for housing for veterans. So he's like, please look at this North Metro area, can we identify permanent supportive housing for veterans? And we'll have the VA team from the state and the federal level behind us, as well as the folks from your city team. So I feel like it's going to be a great collaboration. And 12 units is neighborhood-based scale, and I want to make sure it's in keeping with the context of the neighborhood.
Thank you. And I have some more questions. In the meeting with the residents last week, was that the first or only time? And what has the feedback been, from your perspective, from the residents?
Sure. So we've met previously with Counselor Taylor and Counselor O'Malley, and invited them to tour the building and talk a little bit about what we're doing. In terms of the public meeting that was last week, we think it went very well, and we've kept up communications with a few of the attendees who had asked questions about what the building, how it will operate, and construction questions, things like that. You know, we've been pretty transparent about what we're trying to do. So as far as anyone who's asked a question in the community, we hope that we've answered it or invited them to take a look at the building, things like that, and would continue to do so up until the day we would open, presumably.
And if you're doing, you know, relatively significant construction, would you provide updates along the way, or different notifications to the residents during that period?
Yeah, we would be happy to. I think we established a good relationship with the two, the ward counselors, as well as the counselors-at-large, who we did reach out to. If that is the best avenue to give their constituents updates, we'd be happy to provide construction updates, especially, you know, when we actually would break ground and progress updates. I know that the city's planning website has a really good project page for this, but we would be more than willing to provide updates for the community.
That's great. I'm also, this is somewhat small, but I'm curious why the no-parking sign would just be on the east and not the west? I'm given, I'm just picturing trying to pull out and turn left, and how difficult that might be, especially on a busy road? And if it would be more difficult if there was vehicles parked on the left side?
Yes. I think the, a couple of things about the parking arrangement. One is, is that it's set up to preserve the existing condition where the exit on Salem Street provides options, as opposed to Albion, which is one-way heading down. So that tends to make sense for your incoming traffic to enter off of Salem and then circulate through and then come back out. That was the existing condition. And the one that, in concert with our engineers and the traffic analysis that was done, was the best approach. One other thing that supports this is, the anticipated traffic is going to be actually less than what the office use previously would have engendered at its peak rates. And that was reviewed with BCS, the third-party consultant, in terms of morning and afternoon trips. And hopefully, that mitigates, with this new proposed use, that will help mitigate any issues, particularly with the school down the road and other traffic conflicts.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I just have one more. Oh, sorry, did you?
I just wanted to make also a comment, that I want to make sure that personally, the board understands my role. So at the neighborhood meeting, there was a lot of people, and they had a lot of good questions, very interested in helping, but I make it a policy of giving out my cellphone card to everyone. And whether that's during construction, or once the building is operating, if there's an issue about timing to pick up our trash, or if there's a dumpster, if there's issues with our tenants, or there's any matter that they're concerned about, they call me directly and I'll get involved. I'm a big fan of Good Neighbor and making sure that you're communicating when things are going well, but also if there's issues, they can call me directly. The property in Somerville, there's six core butters. Never got a phone call. We also did a five-story renovation right down near Boston Medical, that's surrounded by high-end condos. And we're part of the Neighborhood Association that we welcome. And I've never gotten a phone call. And that's a 24-bed recovery facility for men in the middle and surrounded by million-dollar condos. So that's the kind of expectation I have for our staff, but also, we want feedback from you and the neighbors.
Thank you.
Joseph, Stephanie, you have?
Oh, just one more thing with the dumpster. It looks like it's supposed to be 20 feet from a property line, it's three feet, and is there just no, logistically, nowhere else to put it, essentially?
Yes, we did look at that. The primary issue for us is the one-way traffic flow and access for the vehicle that will pick that dumpster up. And consideration was given to the fact that we have both existing and where necessary will renew a full-height stockade fence. It also happens to abut against a business use, so less of an impact on a residential use where you have an early or later arrival of that truck. So it was considered, we did look at other places. One of the things that we're doing is, it's a relatively small dumpster, so more manageable and fully screened as well.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I just had one quick question. Is there?
Is there, I may have missed it in the plans, if there are bicycle racks on the premise?
Yeah, there may not be one on the plans, but you know, that's something we would be happy to install if that was a requirement, a condition. Yeah.
Absolutely.
And the good thing is that there's space for it, so.
I don't know if this is a requirement, but you can take that on advisement.
I would just add, Board Member Henry, that through the Home Depot Foundation, that's very interested in doing anything with veterans. We received 50 brand-new bikes, and we handed those out to veterans out of town in Plymouth. And if we want more, we can get them. So we encourage healthy and really bicycling, and certainly in downtown Malden. So I'm sure we'll be able to show up with some new bikes, and I bet the tenants will be psyched.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Eric. Anyone else have any questions? Yeah, yeah, no one's weighing in, so you might as well ask Michelle.
A couple of comments or questions I had. In terms of the bicycle rack, a bicycle rack isn't required by the ordinance. But if you did want it to be put on site, you could add that as a condition, that it be installed, the bicycle rack be installed. But it's not required under the ordinance. Sounds like there are remenable to do it.
Sure.
I had a question about the staff. So the staff is basic, that are going to use the office will come and go? They don't stay overnight? It's not like a onsite staff person? It's, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. And typically, in a smaller development like this, we'll identify someone who is a responsible resident manager, just in case something happens, the first responder. We have property, clinical, and program staff on beepers, on calls all the time. So if something happened in the middle of the night, we would respond. But once again, this is independent, permanent supportive housing for veterans. And you know, once again, there'll be a variety of services they can access. And also, we want them to get out in the community and get connected through other services from providers or through the city. And we will have a lot of volunteers coming through, I think, at some point in Malden. My sense is it'll be great to get the Legion, Alex Club, other people involved that want to support other vets. So we see a barn-raising opportunity here.
Okay, so the staff that'll use the office are visiting staff, providers? There's nobody there that, nobody stays the whole overnight or anything?
No overnight.
Okay. So this resident manager, is that's one of the residences identified as the resident manager?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. And in terms of the rooftop equipment, I did notice on the plans that you were going to relocate the HVAC systems that are on the ground. And you mentioned that you wanted to get them off the ground. You mentioned that they would go on the rooftop. So where exactly are they going in this little fenced guardrail area? Or where do you envision them going? And typically, the board would require mechanicals be screened visually and for noise reduction? So could you address any of that?
Certainly. The plans show on the roof plan that the heat pump outdoor units would be located in the central part of the roof. This is somewhat, this is screened by the gable roof that faces Salem Street. And it would also be enclosed with a vertical picket guardrail, both for safety as well as for acoustic reasons. We provide access via roof hatch from the third-floor level up to this restricted area within the central part of the roof plan.
So that's this PVC guardrail, PVC guardrail, it looks like a little fence on the top of the roof?
We could look at making that a more dense spacing, or use a alternating slat approach, which would provide better visual screening of those units, number one, and also help with the acoustic separation you're looking for.
Okay.
So we would be happy to adjust that vertical picket design.
Okay, I do see it now. It's on this A102 plan, the rectangle in the center, if anyone wants to see that. Okay. And then, in terms of the dumpster, so as one of the, as Stephanie mentioned, it is, it does violate the requirements to be located within the property lines. On a similar project, actually almost across the street, there was a similar issue where they were proposing a dumpster immediately on the property line. And the board required them to use lidded containers and totes that would be stored in an enclosed area. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't be in violation of the dumpsters on the property line. And a dumpster also seems to attract different things, trash and animals, as opposed to the tote. So would you, keeping it in the same location but not having a permanent dumpster was what the board in the past has looked at. So trash and recycling stored in these totes or containers, and also still enclosed. You still would need your own service. Anything over seven units, they can't use the city pickup. So you'd have to contract. Is that?
Not a problem at all. Thank you for that clarification on that, too.
Okay, that was, those were those comments. I don't think I had any, anything else. One other question, so does the lift go all the way to the third floor or it only goes to the first floor?
First?
In basement, so?
First and ground floor.
Okay, because you said it was accessible. Okay, because I didn't see it on the plans coming out anywhere else, okay.
Right, and the basement is where those common area functions are, the kitchen and laundry services as well.
Okay, thanks.
Is that it, Michelle?
Yes.
Does anyone else have any questions for the petitioner? No, is there anything else you would like to add to your presentation?
I just want to say, we appreciate you listening, answering, you know, asking very thoughtful questions. You know, when I've had discussions with the mayor and other leaders, we see this as a full partnership with the city and a collaboration that hopefully will lead to other things, so we can look at other community needs. So we welcome your input. We'd appreciate a positive vote to move forward, and we'll keep you posted. So thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to take anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition. Anyone to speak in favor? Diane, do you have anything to read in favor?
Yes, I do. I have a letter addressed, dated October 1st, 2025. It says, "Dear Chair Iovin and members of the Malden Planning Board, I write you today to express my full support of Volunteers of America Massachusetts Inclusionary Zoning Special Permit Application to construct 12 housing units for veterans at 105 Salem Street. The creation of veterans' housing in Malden has long been identified as a top priority of the city in its efforts to address the adverse effects of the ongoing housing crisis that has displaced many of our veteran residents. The addition of 12 studio housing units, 10 of which will be affordable, will be a crucial step in ensuring what we continue to deliver on the promise to keep Malden affordable for all residents, particularly for our nation's heroes. VOAMASS has also indicated that they will be offering supportive services for residents as part of the proposed project. Through this expansion of critical resources and in addition to the care they provide for residents at Forestdale Park, VOAMASS has demonstrated the desire to become a valuable member of our community. By substantially rehabilitating the current size to create affordable housing opportunities for veterans and utilizing a maximum local preference of 7% allowed by law, VOAMASS has proven to be a trusted partner in caring for and providing for Malden. Thank you for consideration of this application, and I respectfully request that you grant an inclusionary zoning special permit. This will ensure that VOAMASS is able to deliver on developing 12 housing units for Malden's veteran residents. Sincerely, Gary Christensen, Mayor, City of Malden." Another letter dated October 2nd. Dear Chair Iovin and members of the Malden Planning Board, I write to you today in full support of Volunteers of America Massachusetts, VOAMASS, and their efforts to receive their inclusionary zoning special permit to construct 12 veterans' housing units at 105 Salem Street. This project will substantially rehabilitate the current structure to create 12 new studio apartment rental units for veterans, including 10 affordable units. With the housing crisis threatening to price out and displace many of our long-term veteran residents, this project will be a welcome addition to Ward 4. Ward 4. The continuing need for affordable housing in Malden, particularly for our veteran residents, will help deliver on the city's mission to provide affordable housing opportunity for Maldonians who otherwise may not have been able to afford to stay in the city. Throughout the beginning stages of the project, VOAMASS has been a valuable partner in providing a transparent and community-centered planning process. I am happy to report that the project team is prioritizing the addition of open space and shade trees to help increase our urban tree canopy and mitigation the heat island effect of asphalt parking lots. These quality-of-life improvements are being done without any reduction is the parking required for the project. Additionally, the project will be fire and life safety upgrades to the building, which make the entire neighborhood safer. I look forward to continuing to partner with them throughout the stages of the development to ensure this project addresses the needs of Ward 4 council residents. Thank you for the consideration. I ask you to grant an exclusionary zoning special permit for the project to streamline the process for VOAMASS in developing 12 new housing units for Malden veterans, veteran residents. Sincerely, Ryan O'Malley, City Council, Ward 4." A letter dated October 3rd, 2025. Dear Planning Board, we would like to voice our strong support for the proposed changes to 105-105A Salem Street, parcel ID number 087264407, permit application number CMID 073781-2025, section 12.12.030 and 12.12.300 MCC to alter, structurally change, extend, and allow use of pre-existing non-conforming property and residential office zoning district for multifamily dwelling up to three stories and inclusionary development construct addition to existing building, renovate for 12 affordable housing units for veterans. Affordable housing for veterans is long overdue. The use of the property at 105-105A Salem Street for this purpose seems ideal. The support services for the residents, which were outlined by the agency undertaking this development, seem thoughtful and comprehensive, considering the needs of both the house and neighborhood residents. We look forward to the project's completion and hope that the veterans feel welcome in the neighborhood. Best regards, Philip and Pamela Bronder Giraud, 40 Sprague Street, Malden." A letter dated October 6th. Dear Chair Iovin and members of the Planning Board, I write to encourage your enthusiastic support of the special permit request submitted by VOAMASS to develop 12 units of affordable housing for veterans at 105 Salem Street. As you likely are aware, VOAMASS is an experienced developer and operator of supportive housing for veterans throughout the region. This is a population with unique needs for diverse, who deserve a robust menu of services to ensure that those who serve our country are served by our community. The proposed development at 105 Salem Street serves as an upgrade for the entire neighborhood. In addition to bringing the property up to modern accessibility standards, VOAMASS promises to make environmentally sustainable choices. The addition of 12 units to the city's inventory of affordable housing will also move Malden closer to complying with Chapter 40B as required under Massachusetts general law. VOAMASS seeks to be a good neighbor by adding 12 units of affordable housing to Malden, reducing our city's fossil fuel footprint and supporting a particularly vulnerable group of our neighbors. Every unit of affordable housing represents a life-changing investment in someone's future. Now is the time to welcome investment in our city from those who seek to contribute positively to Malden. I look forward to VOAMASS's work in the neighborhood and encourage a thorough review and approval of their request for a special permit to move forward with this project. Best regards, Sarah Zeiberg, 49th Sprague Street, Apartment 1, Rier." A letter dated October 6th, 2025. Chair Iovin and members of the Planning Board, I write today as a resident of 102 Salem Street, directly across the street from proposed VOA development, to express my strong support for a Planning Board decision to approve the special permit that will allow the construction of 12 units of affordable veterans' housing at 105 Salem Street. As someone who lives close by, I can, I care deeply about both the character and the well-being of this community. The plans VOAMASS has put forward reflect the kind of thoughtful, responsible development Malden needs, one that not only improves an underused property, but does so in a way that serves a meaningful public's purpose. Bringing affordable supportive housing for veterans to this location is something I'm proud, I'm proud to see happen here. VOAMASS approach to providing stable housing with wraparound supports give me confidence that the residents will be well cared for and that the property will be well managed. They already successfully manage a much larger property with similar purposes, the Massachusetts Bay Veterans Center in Somerville, and have done so for many, for more than 10 years. The planned renovation and upgrades will also be a significant physical improvement to the building and surrounding streetscape. It's encouraging to see an investment that prioritizes safety, accessibility, and energy efficiency will also strengthen our community fabric. I'm grateful that the project will bring new life to 105 Salem Street and creates a welcoming home for veterans who have served our country. I urge the Planning Board to approve the special permit and support this welcome improvement in our community fabric. Sincerely, Emily Granoff, 102 Salem Street, Apartment 3." Letter dated October 6th, 2025. Chair Iovin and members of the Planning Board, on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Malden Warming Center, we are writing to express our strong support for the Volunteers of America of Massachusetts proposal to develop 105 Salem Street into affordable housing for veterans. The mission of the Malden Warming Center is to provide safe, compassionate support to individuals experiencing homelessness and housing instability. Through that work, we see every day the urgent need for our permanent supportive housing options, especially for veterans who are disproportionately represented among those struggling with homelessness. The VOAMASS project directly addresses this need by creating high-quality supportive housing designed to help veterans rebuild stability and independence. VOAMASS has long and well-established record of success in this area. The Massachusetts Bay Veterans Center in Somerville has operated for more than a decade, offering transitional and permanent housing coupled with case management, employment assistance, mental health, and substance use treatment, and other vital supports. The organization's commitment to comprehensive wraparound services is exactly the approach we need to take with vulnerable populations. And with our, and we are confident that this new Malden development will be both well-managed and deeply beneficial to its residents. We believe this project represents the kind of mission-driven, community-strengthening development that Malden should embrace. It advances shared goals of housing stability, equity, and care for those who have served our country. The Malden Warming Center is proud to offer its full support for VOAMSS's proposal, and we urge the Planning Board to approve the special permit request that will allow for the construction of 12 units of affordable veterans' housing at this location. Sincerely, Emily Lazaro, President, MWC Board of Directors." Last letter dated October 7th. Chair Iovin and members of the Planning Board, I urge the Planning Board to approve the special permit request for VOAMSS to allow for the construction of 12 units of this property. As a resident, as a Malden resident living just a block away, I'm grateful to see an organization with such a strong track record investing in our neighborhood and addressing a real community need. From what I've seen, the proposal is exactly the kind of thoughtful, purposeful development that benefits both people it serves in the surrounding communities. Transforming a vacant existing building into a safe, accessible, and energy-efficient housing for veterans will bring new life to the property and contribute positively to the character of Salem Street. As someone who frequently passes this property in my way to work, restaurants in other parts of our community like the YWCA, I am glad to see a plan that adds stability and care to our neighborhood. The residents, VOAMSS, will serve veterans of working long-term, excuse me, to our long-term housing security deserves a place in our city, and I trust that VOAMSS will manage the property responsibly and with compassion, as they've done successfully elsewhere. This project reflects the values I want to see Malden prioritize: inclusion, service, and community support. I hope the Planning Board approves it and will keep, and helps make this an important investment in our city's future possible. Sincerely, Kristen Holmeyer, 12 Auburn Street, Unit 1, Malden." And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Seeing and hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone in opposition? Diane, anything to read in opposition?
I do not.
Thank you. Seeing and hearing no one wants to speak in opposition, declare that part of the hearing closed. Michelle, do you have anything in general to read?
Uh, no, I will reference a couple of other documents, but I won't read them into the record, unless you want me to.
No, go ahead.
Okay. One is the letter, and you have a copy of this, the letter dated September 23rd, 2025. It's from the Office of Strategic Planning It's from the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, and this is a letter signed by Ben Gately, the Housing Program Coordinator at that city office. And also, so this is basically what we refer to as a compliance letter, so that OSPCD has reviewed the petitioner's inclusionary zoning application, part of this application, and found them to be in compliance with the provisions of the inclusionary zoning. So that's what that letter is about. It's a three-page letter. I don't think we have to read that into the record, but it's incorporated by reference into the record. Attached to that letter is a memorandum of understanding, which has to do with future compliance of the petitioner with a couple of the inclusionary zoning requirements. And that memorandum is dated September 11th, 2025, and it was signed by the petitioner, one of them we've just heard from, the president and CEO, Charles Gaggen. It's also been signed by the Director of Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, Alex Pratt, and Director of Inspection Services, Nelson Miller. So that's also incorporated in, and I'll reference those a little bit when we get into the recommendation as well. But those are two documents you have, your package also. You have a new letter from BSC Group dated October 1st, 2025. BSC Group is the city peer reviewer. They did the peer review for you of the traffic waiver request, which you discussed last month. You also have in your package a folder of those documents that you saw last month when you granted the waiver. It was conditional on a couple issues being addressed. This letter dated October 1st, 2025, reviews the additional information that was presented and makes two other recommendations, which, so it reviews the additional information, finds that it satisfied the condition that you put on the traffic waiver request, which again, we'll get to the specifics. And also, the two additional requirements were addressed by the petitioner in the revised site plan. One is the installation of the lower landscaping at that Salem Street Site Drive, and the other is working with the city to install the no parking sign near the crosswalk, which is one of the conditions I'll be recommending. So those are the other, and you have copies of that, those as well. So those are the other documents, Chair.
Thank you. Could you take us through your staff report then, please?
Yes. Did I say that that first letter from OSPCD was dated September 23rd, 2025? If I didn't, that's the date of that letter. And then the BSC is October 1st. So this is the planning report and recommendation dated October 8th, 2025. I won't read it verbatim into the record, but it's incorporated here and by reference into the record. We've heard about the petition. There's a description of the petition here. We won't go through that. We've already gone through that. The petitioner's gone through that, I should say. The plans that were submitted are also itemized for your reference, including the revised site plan and proposed parking layout plan. In terms of zoning, the subject property is located in the residential office zoning district. The proposed multifamily dwelling use up to three stories inclusive may be allowed by special permit in this district. The directed right to the west is an office building with general offices, bank offices, and pre-existing non-conforming medical and dental offices, and acupuncture center. To the south, a two-family dwelling. To the east, on the other side of Albion Street, a four-family dwelling, three-family dwelling, and single-family dwelling. To the north, on the other side of Salem Street, a five-family, two-family dwelling, and three-family dwelling. Surrounding land uses are institutional and include the Malden Fire Department Headquarters and Malden High School residential uses, and the residence zoning district abuts to the northeast and south. So the existing building on the property, as it was previously occupied for offices and a single-family dwelling, predates and violates current dimensional controls for lot area, front yard setback, and one side yard setback. It is considered pre-existing non-conforming. This proposal exacerbates the existing lot area deficiency, front yard setback violation, side yard setback violation, and creates a new deficiency of open space and density. Based on the density requirements, eight units are allowed. That includes the two density bonus units allowed as incentives under the inclusionary zoning. 12 units are proposed, which is a 50% violation of four units. So I've given you the breakdown here so you can see for multifamily dwelling up to three stories what the lot area per unit is required. That's the density requirement. So for this size lot, six units would be allowed. Density bonus allows one additional unit per each required affordable housing unit, so that's an additional two units, bringing you up to eight, and proposed are 12. In terms of open space, the proposal is to provide approximately 2,154 square feet of open space. It is deficient about approximately 28% of the amount of open space required for the 12 units. Under the proposal, open space is provided in different small yard areas, will be landscaped. None of the proposed open space complies with dimensional requirements of the usable open space requirements. They have to be a certain size and certain dimension to be counted. So it does exist, it just doesn't comply with the dimensional controls. Or it is proposed, I should say. It doesn't exist now. It is proposed. I will note, and we'll get to this when we do the findings as well, that new violations and increased nonconformities may be allowed by special permit, provided the board makes a finding that any creation or increase in violations will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. So in terms of the density violations, open space violations, and increased lot area and yard setback violations, you would need to make those findings. Terms of parking requirements for the proposed 12 studio units, 12 parking spaces are required. That's one per studio unit. For the affordable housing units, one space is also required per unit, so it's the same. 12 spaces are required. Only 10 of the 12 units are proposed as affordable housing units, but again, it's 12 based on the size of the units, studio units. So the proposal is to provide 12 parking spaces. We heard that. That includes one A D A B N accessible space. The office is for program support services. That's considered accessory to the residential use, so that doesn't have a separate parking requirement. The proposal does eliminate the existing parking nonconformity. In terms of the layout, I've described the layout here for you. The layout is conforming. There will be, and I think the petitioner mentioned this, a one-way circulation pattern. You can see that on the plan. So you enter in Albion Street, and you'll exit onto Salem Street, or via Salem Street. So there will be modifications to the curb cut on Albion Street. The existing curb cut on Salem Street will be used. Bicycle parking, I mentioned before, the proposal requires none, but if you would like it to be required, I would recommend you add a condition requiring it. Landscaping, the proposal appears to comply with current and recently amended requirements. Snow storage is provided for storage of cloud snow from the uncovered parking spaces. In terms of screening, the proposal provides the required screening of abutting residential uses. The proposal wasn't 100% clear. The plan is showing the existing starcade fencing along the southern property line, which is the property line that abuts the residence on Albion Street. It also shows the required screening area, three feet in width. It also shows screening along the western property line abutting the businesses. What wasn't clear is whether that was proposed to be replaced or repaired, so I am recommending a condition that is that they repair or replace it, so they could, it is in need of repair in some sections. You can see that from the site photos I've included in your package. And in terms of trash, the proposed dumpster, as we heard, is located approximately three feet from the property line. It doesn't comply with the requirements. I understand that is a property line with the business, but it is still a property line, and the ordinance says they can't be, a dumpster can't be located within 20 feet of a property line. So as I mentioned earlier, I will recommend a condition similar to what you have used in the past in this situation regarding not allowing a permanent dumpster, so they can use a dumpster during construction and renovation, but there wouldn't be a permanent dumpster. They would store trash in totes or covered containers, and it would still be in an enclosed area, though. In terms of traffic impact, the proposal does require a traffic impact study. The city peer reviewed petitioner's request for the waiver. There are several letters, you have copies of all of them, from Amy Allen, the transportation engineer from BSC Group, who is also here if we have any questions. So correspondence dated September 9th, 2025, correspondence dated September 10th, 2025, email dated September 10th, 2025, correspondence dated September 20th, 2025, and correspondence dated October 1st, 2025. On September 10th, 2025, this board considered and granted petitioner's requests for the waiver, subject to the condition that petitioner submit the requested site distance calculations analysis for city peer review, which was recommended by the city peer review. That was done. As I said, and two other follow-up recommendations came out of that, one to do with the on-street parking prohibition and working to get signage installed, and the second to regarding installation of the lower landscaping. Again, those are shown on the revised site plans. In terms of inclusionary zoning, because the proposal does create eight or more dwelling units, it is considered, it does require inclusionary development. I probably won't go through all this unless you want me to, or maybe I'll just go through the mandatory provision part of it. So the proposal's to provide 10 units, so that's what the calculation of the affordable housing units is based on. 15% of the 10 is 1.5 units, so that's what's required, 1.5 affordable housing units. They are using the alternative method of compliance for the fractional unit rounding up, so instead of providing 1.5 affordable housing units, they're providing an additional unit. So that's why they're providing, or they're required to provide a minimum of two. So they're required to provide a minimum of two affordable housing units, and then they get the density bonus for the two, the two required. And they're proposing to actually construct 10, so they're exceeding what's required. They don't need to use the parking adjustment incentive, again, because all the units are studios, so they already only require one space per unit. And then I mentioned the memorandum of understanding and the compliance memorandum dated September 23rd already. So in terms of findings required to grant the special permit, so this is before you for the special permit for the multifamily residential dwelling, and it's also before you for the special permit for the inclusionary zoning development, or the inclusionary development, excuse me. So the findings required to grant the special permit, any creation or increase in violation of dimensional controls or parking requirements will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. That's one of the findings you need to make. The second finding is that the residential use is in the interest of the common good. So both of those are the findings for the multifamily dwelling use. And then the third finding is specific to the inclusionary zoning, in that is you would need to find compliance with the requirements of the inclusionary zoning ordinance. Do you want to stop or keep going? So the planning recommendation, which was prepared prior to the public hearing, you made, provided that the board makes the required findings, the recommendation is to grant a special permit, subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be Esper plans except as modified by these conditions. Two, the maximum number of dwelling units is 12, the maximum number of bedrooms is 12, and as proposed, all units shall be reserved for veterans. All units shall be rental apartments, and a minimum of 10 units shall be affordable housing units. So that means the 10 units would need to comply with all requirements of our inclusionary zoning ordinance. Three, prior to issuance of any occupancy permit, developer owners shall comply with all terms of the memorandum of understanding dated September 11th, 2025, regarding affordable housing units, which is incorporated here and by reference. Again, those are the future requirements in terms of the inclusionary zoning. Specifically, they have to do with the marketing, the lottery, and the preservation of affordability, if that's right. I think that's correct. I think those are the three. Lottery plan, marketing plan, and the legal instruments for preservation of affordability. So those documents they're going to provide prior to occupancy. Four, install and maintain all open space and landscaping as depicted on proposed site plan. Five, repair, replace existing privacy fencing and maintain privacy fencing along southern property lines to screen parking lot from abutting residents at 13-15 Albion Street. If you wanted it to be required that they also screen from the business on Holden Street, you would need to add that in. It's not required. What's required is that they screen the parking lot from the abutting residential. So that's up to this board if you want to add in that requirement. It does look like they're proposing to continue the fencing or maintain the fencing. Six, file a petition with the Traffic Commission and coordinate with city to install no parking signage adjacent to Salem Street driveway. What they'll do is file a petition, they'll ask the city councilor of the ward to sponsor it, and they'll just, the Traffic Commission will make a decision whether to install the signage or not. I will also recommend, based on what we've heard tonight, seven, a condition, screen rooftop mechanicals visually and for noise reduction. I understand they've already proposed something, but this will make sure that it's going to do the visual and noise reduction screening as well, or supplement what they propose, I guess, based on what we heard from the architect. The eighth condition, no permanent dumpsters allowed. Trash and recycling shall be stored in lidded containers, totes, in an enclosed area in the location on the site plan. So it will be in the same location they're proposing for the dumpster, it just won't be a dumpster. That's the same condition that you used on that last project that had a similar situation. And then finally, again, if you want, I have a note here, install bicycle rack on site. It's up to you whether you want to do that. I don't, they're stating they're going to do it, but again, it's not required. And I don't know, usually you say how many bicycle, how much parking is provided. So if you're going to put that in, I would make a suggestion, you state what size.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle on her staff report and recommendations? Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle, I'm sorry, but could you, the additional amendments, could you run through those just one more time?
Yes. So the one additional amendment I referenced was in condition five. If you want to also have the property along 6-10 Holden screened, you would just add that address to condition five. So it would say install and maintain privacy fencing along southern property line to screen parking lot from abutting residents at 13-15 Albion Street and western property line at 6-10 Holden Street. That's one. Recommended condition seven, which is a new condition, screen rooftop mechanicals visually and for noise reduction. Eight, no permanent dumpsters allowed. Trash and recycling shall be stored in lidded containers, totes, slash totes, in an enclosed area in the location on site plan. And then nine, if you want to require the installation of a bicycle rack, I would say it would be install bicycle rack on site to provide parking for, and then list how
I think you, for my opportunity, I think you pretty well outlined those conditions, with the exception of providing a number of bicycle racks, a number of bicycles for the racks, so I would recommend, I would propose eight.
Okay. Parking for eight bicycles.
Correct.
Eric, would you also like to make that a motion, to have the nine conditions? Eric, would you also like to make that a motion, to have the nine conditions?
Yes. With the addition, I want to also explicitly add to, that we want to, for condition number five, that we're, you know, also including the enclosures on the west property line at 6-10 Holden.
So you're making that motion that five's adjusted and then add seven, eight, and nine?
Correct.
And actually, Mr. Chair, if I would suggest on nine, the condition can just be provide bicycle parking for eight on site. That way, if they do an outdoor rack, it's fine. If they end up finding someplace inside, because sometimes they're covered, you know?
Okay.
So if you, if you're okay with that, that way, it doesn't have to necessarily be a rack outside, it can be, just as long as they provide the bicycle parking for eight on site.
Michelle, that'd be a little bit better if we could, we put minimum in front of that.
Okay. Provide a minimum, parking for a minimum of eight bicycle. Is that what you mean?
Correct. Okay, you have all that, Michelle?
I do.
So Eric's made a motion to approve with nine conditions. Is there a second for that? What's that? Oh, why isn't Pat's thing working? There you go, Pat.
I'll second.
I can, Pat, Patrick Hayes has...
So that was...
Seconded.
Grant the special permit with nine conditions.
No, no, I can see it, I just need to, it limits me to three people.
Yeah, you got to change that.
So I got to kind of, yeah, well, I didn't.
Don't worry about it, yeah?
Okay, go ahead.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Michelle Ferguson?
Oh, Michelle Ferguson.
To what did you go, Biscalassi?
Yes.
Risa Gray?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
Ronnie Rajverma?
Yes.
Chuck Owen?
Yes. Petition's been granted with the conditions. Good luck with it. Thank you very much for coming, Amy.
Yes, we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you for the great work. Thanks. Michelle, let me know when you're ready to roll.
Ready.
Okay, next item on the agenda, community preservation agreement. Ronnie, would you like to give us an update?
Yep, yeah, let me catch you guys up on the ELC playground. Construction is complete. A permanent sign that promotes when the playground is open outside of school hours has been designed, fabricated, and installed. The Cheryl Park, construction on the park is complete. During the ribbon cutting, it became clear that childcare providers desire additional fencing in the playground area to ensure that children cannot escape onto the street, so an additional piece of fence will be designed and installed. A permanent sign is not yet in place. Linden Rink, construction is complete, but a permanent sign has not yet been installed. Over at the Malden River Works, construction is underway and ongoing. Construction work so far includes demolition, excavation, soil remediation, and work in underground drainage systems. And then for Spot Pond Brook Greenway, the Greenway has made significant design changes, rerouting a section of the future path that is opposite of the direction of the originally intended Charles Street side, so it will reduce dangerous conflicts with bicyclists, pedestrians, cars, and construction vehicles traveling on Canal and Charles Street. And then we had some applications starting, we basically started the application process last month, so so far we have a handful of applicants. Some of them include St. Paul's Church, a rental assistance program, Emmanuel Baptist Church, Malden Affordable Housing Trust, Linden Park, and the city council digit, digitization of city council records. So those are ongoing. Once we have a little bit more concrete information on what they're looking for exactly, I'll have printouts for the next meeting on specific applicants and what they're looking for, so that way we can all kind of see where everything's getting divvied up. So that's the upcoming stuff and where we're at with what we do have. So that's it for me.
Terrific. Thank you, Ronnie. Michelle, anything for, anything for master plan activities or open space and recreation plan?
Well, master plan steering committee, now also known as comprehensive plan, did meet, met last month, and we're going to try to schedule for the next couple months. The RFP is not done yet, so the project really hasn't started yet in the sense of the master planning part of it. The RFP's for the consultant. So Office of Strategic Planning is working on the RFP. And also, in terms of the open space and recreation plan, they're managing that project. I'm not sure the status of that. I did ask for an update last month, and I will ask for another update, so I'm not sure the status of that.
Okay, thank you. Next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, November 12th. Diane has already said she can't make it.
Okay.
Anyone else, if you find you can't make it, what makes it helpful, Ken, this evening, had a work commitment pop out of nowhere, but having Michelle and Maria on board gives us some flexibility to accommodate other members as life happens. But if you can't make it, just let Michelle know, and we can plan accordingly. If there's nothing else from anyone, is there a motion adjourned? Who is that? Eric Henry? Eric Henry, motion adjourned. Is there a second for that?
I just, I just wanted to take a quick point of privilege about that. Yes, and I would to be to recognize a Maldonian who just kind of recently passed, and I think that's Mr. George Lasky. One thing I did when I came on the planning board is I wanted to learn something about the city every time I came here, and when Mr. Lasky was in chambers, that definitely happened. So, yeah, a credit to him, and he will be missed, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. So is there a motion to adjourn?